Just a reminder to folks who are joining in, please mute your phone during this time so that you'll be able to hear more clearly. I'm going to now do a roll call for the board members to identify who is present for the call. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank? Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed here? I didn't... Okay.
Commissioner Chen... Commissioner Chen, he needed to leave a little early.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Sykes?
Okay, and I am here.
So I think there is seven present and three who are absent. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
Don't move, Bondima.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, McFadden.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so we have... This motion passes. We have seven in favor and three absent. This evening, I would like to take some time to recognize the passing of some city schools' employees. Each of these individuals was committed to supporting our students through their work, and they will be remembered fondly by the greater city schools community. And tonight, we send our deepest condolences to their friends and their families. It is with deep regret we inform you of the passing of Shannon Kotman, who served in city schools for 18 years as a coordinator at New Era Academy. Mr. Kotman departed on October the 8th, 2020, and will be missed greatly by his family, friends, and all of city schools. I also want to inform you of the passing of Angelita Brown, who served in city schools for 13 years as an educational associate at Achievement Academy. Ms. Brown departed on October the 14th, 2020, and she too will be greatly missed by her family, friends, and city schools colleagues. And I also regretfully inform you of the passing of Gloria Hairston, who served as a principal at Mary E. Rodman Elementary. With 30 years with city schools, she retired January of 2006. Ms. Hairston departed on October the 22nd, 2020, and will be greatly missed by her family, friends, and city schools. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembering these three employees. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session meeting minutes? Pardon me.
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Richardson.
I heard Commissioner Roberts, thank you. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. No opposed or abstentions. This motion is again seven in favor and three absent. And now is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
Don't move, Roberts.
Thank you. Second?
Bondima.
Brooks.
Commissioner Brooks, thank you. And those in favor again, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Seven in favor and two absent. Okay, thank you. This evening, I have several items that I'm going to talk with you about. First, I had the pleasure of announcing the results of the executive board elections for the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City. The election was held on October the 8th. Candidates were required to complete an application, obtain references from teachers or administrators, give a speech, and participate in a question and answer session at the election. Student leaders representing student government associations from across Baltimore City had the opportunity to ask questions of candidates and to hear their vision for the future of the district. Approximately 40 students from middle and high schools responded to communication from ASCBC and their school-level advisors to participate in the election process. I believe some of you may be on the call, and so students, when I call your name, please let me know if you're here so we can congratulate you. First, we have Ms. Alana Hines, who was elected president, and she is a student at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, I'm going to let you come back in a moment, Ms. Hines, but I'm glad to see that you're here. Great. Then we have Ms. Junior Dejeff, who is the vice, was elected vice president, also from Baltimore Polytechnic Institute.
Yes, I'm here.
I'm sorry, mister. Okay. Have Mr. Brian Reed, who is the treasurer from Murvo?
I'm here.
Congratulations. Ms. Deasia Pennell, who is the middle school executive from Hazelwood Elementary Middle School?
Hi, I'm here.
Congratulations. Ms. Shadie Parham, who is secretary from Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School? Is she here? We'll congratulate her. And at this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Hines as the newly elected president, if she would like to make any remarks.
Hi, this is my first time using Microsoft Teams. Can you guys hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alrighty, good evening, everyone. My name is Alana Hines. As you stated previously, I'm currently a senior at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute. I'm really proud of all the great ideas that we've been working on, and the council members are just amazing. I look forward to collaborating with you all and providing feedback for all the ideas that you guys have in store. Right now, I think that we're in a very intricate position because we're in a very tight election, so I, as well as all the other board members, encourage everyone to vote and stay safe and have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hines. And on behalf of all of the board, I want to extend my congratulations to all of you. We look forward to working together with you during this year, and we are so happy to see strong student leaders. So again, thank you and congratulations, and I will echo what you said to everyone. Please remember to vote. If you are registered, go out there and vote. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, I want to speak... Speaking of folks who just got elected, I also want to make an announcement that the mayor is seeking candidates for this board, the school board. The application period is currently open, and interested persons must apply by November 25th. For more information, including eligibility requirements, please check the City of Baltimore's website under Office of the Mayor, Boards and Commissions. And now, it's the second meeting of the month, and so we generally honor our retirees with 30-plus years of experience, and I want to... We have several folks that I'd like to acknowledge, and again, if you are present, please give us a shout-out so that we know you're here. Latonya Robinson Savage started her employment with Baltimore City Public Schools on February the 5th, 1989, as a school secretary at Booker T. Washington. She was later assigned to Coppin Academy High as a school secretary, too. Ms. Robinson Savage's last assignment was a secretary under the Police Department, School Administration Organization. She served our school system for 31 years and 7 months. Sandra Moore started her employment with Baltimore City Public Schools September 26, 1988, as a part-time food service worker, and later a full-time food service worker at Thomas Johnson Elementary Middle. She later was promoted to cafeteria manager. Ms. Moore served Baltimore City Public Schools for 32 years. Congratulations, Ms. Moore. Shirley Pratt started her employment with city schools on August the 26th, 1986, as a teacher at Lockerman Bundy Elementary. Ms. Pratt was assigned to Pimlico Elementary Middle, where she continued and ended her career. She served city schools for 33 years and 2 months. Congratulations. Bertha Hawkins started her employment with city schools on August 30, 1985, as a teacher at Coldstream Park Elementary. She later was assigned as an instructional support teacher at Hilton Elementary. Ms. Hawkins' last assignment was at Pimlico Elementary Middle. She served city schools for 35 years and 2 months. And then we have Lynn Sorrow, who started her employment with Baltimore City Schools on September 1st, 1974, as a speech pathologist at Elmer F.B. Henderson Elementary. Her last assignment was at Thomas Jefferson Elementary Middle. Ms. Pratt served Baltimore City Schools for 46 years and 2 months. Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Pratt. I'm sorry, Ms. Sorrow. Joma Mangan started her employment with Baltimore City Public Schools in August 1989 as an elementary teacher at Arondo Elementary. She later accepted an assignment at Samuel F.B. Morse Elementary, and that's where she retired. She served city schools for 31 years. Congratulations. And Jacqueline Fleming started her employment with city schools January 12th, 1981, as a principal clerk stenographer at the Division of Vocational Education. She was promoted to an office assistant III, personnel assistant, and personnel generalist at a clerk I. Under those positions, Ms. Fleming also served at the following locations, which includes Harriet Tubman Elementary and Sinclair Lane Elementary. She was promoted to an elementary teacher and was assigned to Sinclair Lane, and her last assignment was at Moravia Park Elementary. Ms. Fleming has served Baltimore City Schools for 39.9 years. To all of these folks with 30 to 40 years, we say thank you, and we hope that you enjoy your retirement, your much-deserved retirement. Thanks for all that you've done for our students and families. The Board of School Commissioners, with the help of the CEO and her team, is exploring... I'm sorry. Yes. The Board of School Commissioners, with the help of the CEO and her team, is exploring ways to return to meeting in person soon. While we have successfully hosted many virtual board and committee meetings since the pandemic's onset, the board looks forward to reconnecting face-to-face with students, staff members, families, and the community. The board has three competing priorities to meet that goal. First, we want to meet in person with in-person public comments. We must do so safely by following social distancing and health guidance. We must make sure all citizens can continue to participate virtually if they choose. The challenge is to strike the right balance to meet all three priorities. A technical committee of district departments found that satisfying those competing responsibilities is not possible currently. We do not have the appropriate size, space, and boardroom technology organization to host in-person meetings, so any member of the public and staff can participate fully and safely. Every compromise or workaround creates another complication that impacts participation. The best way to ensure maximum participation with the fewest challenges is to maintain the current status quo. Our virtual approach has proven successful, and most importantly, stable. Right now, any member of the public may participate safely and thoroughly in ways that are not currently possible with the in-person meetings. Please know again that the school, the Board of School Commissioners, looks forward to resuming in-person meetings in the future. As circumstances allow, we will continue to look into how to do that safely. In the meantime, we are focused on ensuring maximum community participation in these circumstances, and virtual meetings are the best opportunity to do that. Last, I'd like to acknowledge some gifts to the school system. First, a gift of $45,000 worth of health and fitness supplies in support of school physical education programs throughout city schools, from leveling the playing field, and also, and please to publicly thank contributors to the COVID-19 Food Stability Fund. The Fund for Educational Excellence was approached by some of our city's largest corporations to create the COVID-19 Food Stability Fund, and to respond to this pandemic, some of our city's largest corporations reached out to the fund to establish this. The intention of the fund was to support food relief efforts for both Baltimore City and Baltimore City Public Schools. A total of $1.23 million was raised, and nearly $600,000 was given to city schools to provide food relief to our students and families. We'd like to thank the following donors who contributed to this fund. Tirow Price, $250,000. The Baltimore Ravens and Stephen and Renee Scotty Foundation, $250,000. Care First, $150,000. Legg Mason, $25,000. Constellation, $5,000. Comcast, $50,000. Under Armour, $250,000. Bank of America, $25,000. M&amp;T, $100,000. Wells Fargo, $75,000. Bloomberg Philanthropies, $50,000. Thank you to all of you for your contribution, especially in terms of helping our families in need of nourishment and food. And now, board members, is there a motion to approve the Personnel Employment and Payroll PEP, as well as the quasi-judicial matters? Roberts? Thank you. I'm sorry, I was looking down. Is there a second?
Second, Bondima.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
I found it.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
I apologize, that was grandmother time.
That was hilarious. I loved it. I loved it.
Alrighty, I was at Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm also in favor. We have no one opposed or stating, so that was... This motion passes seven in favor and two absent.
Commissioner Chinia?
Yes.
Did you have to give your grandson or the principal, "excuse me"? Like, I got nervous over here when I heard you say, "excuse me."
I'm so sorry. That is what I'm accused of at home, is that my principal voice continues to come out, but believe me, it was a grandmother tone, a grandmother look with the principal voice. Oh, thank you all for that one. And so now, I'm going to... I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sanjelisa at this point, and I'll go to mute so I can talk to my grandson. I love it. I can't think of a better intro, Chair Chinia. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to invite Chief Jeremy Grant Skinner forward for this evening's PEP agenda. Chief Skinner?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Sanjelisa and commissioners. We have four appointments this evening. First, Anthony Cook, Family Support Specialist for DC Public Schools, is appointed coordinator of student wholeness, effective November 9th. Next, Anthony Felder, Manager of School Operations Support, is appointed Director of Academic Operations, effective November 9th. Next, Lara Adewoye, Principal in Prince George's County Public Schools, is appointed Coordinator of High School Strategy and Schedules, effective December 7th. And Esther Wallace, formerly Principal of Vanguard Collegiate Middle School, is assigned to Educational Specialist II for Literacy Support, effective October 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner, and congratulations to everyone who was appointed this evening. To begin my remarks, I am very pleased to recognize the contributions made to city school students, and in particular, our young women, by Corporal Betty Covington of our school police. Corporal Covington is the founder of GEMS, Girls Expecting More Success, a program that has helped young women in Baltimore City High Schools strive for excellence in academics and their personal lives, while guiding them on the path to becoming the best persons they can be by realizing their full potential. Corporal Covington and the GEMS program were recognized in a recent article in the New York Times, but we have known about her selfless dedication and advocacy on behalf of our young women for many years. Her example of mentorship is the goal to which all of our school police officers aspire under the leadership of Chief Akil Ham. The plaque reads, "In appreciation of your many years of such dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to your mentoring program, Girls Expecting More Success and Baltimore City Schools." Corporal Covington, I believe, is here this evening, and it is my honor to invite her to speak and have a few words. Corporal Covington, are you here this evening? I'm just making sure I'm giving wait time, since Principal Chinia is here. Okay, well, if Corporal Covington does come forward at any time, Corporal, you can certainly just interrupt me, and we would love for you to have words, but even if not, I just want you to know that you receive our deepest thanks, not just from your fellow school police officers, but from all of us, and we do thank you all for your service to our schools and our young people every day. Thank you. So, as we approach the end of National Principals Month, it is now my great pleasure to congratulate this year's Heart of the School winners and honorees. We are unable, unfortunately, this year to celebrate their accomplishments in person at the Hippodrome Theater as we normally do, and this has become the... One of the major events of spring here in city schools, where I get to see all of our school leaders gussied up and looking their finest. So because we were not able to do that this year, we did invite these principals to attend this evening, to be recognized tonight for their excellence in leadership and their commitment to their school communities. So without further ado, I will now introduce the 2020 Heart of School Honorees, and the honorees' photos will be shown as we work through. So first, from Empowerment Academy, we have Ms. Ashley Moore. From Walter P. Carter Elementary Middle, we have Mr. Brandon Pinckney. From Hamden Elementary Middle, Ms. Katrina Foster. From Fort Worthington Elementary Middle, we have Ms. Monique Dubai. And from the Bel Air Edison Middle School, we have Ms. Tiffany Halsey. I've had the pleasure of visiting many, if not all, of these principals, so congratulations on behalf of the entire school community. And now, here are the winners of this year's Heart of the School Award. From Medfield Heights Elementary, Ms. Amber Killcoyne. From Mary E. Rodman Elementary, and I saw him just this morning, I should have said congratulations again, Mr. David Guzman. From Wolf Street Academy, Principal Mark Gaither. From Baltimore Design School, we have Principal Zahara Valentine. And the longtime leader of Liberty Elementary School, who is now the Program Officer for Education for the Abel Foundation, Mr. Joe Manco. I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I would also like to take this opportunity to extend our thanks to Roger Schulman and Kevin Leary from the Fund for Educational Excellence, as well as this year's co-chairs for the Heart of the Schools. I think that I heard Paul Wallman was here this evening, as well as his fellow co-chair, Beth Felder. I just want to thank you for making this annual tribute to our principals possible, and thank you for everything that you do for our schools and our students. Congratulations again. October is also LGBTQ Month, an observance of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer history and citizens. Sadly, the history offers too many examples of intolerance, persecution, and the denial of the right to self-determination for countless human beings. It is also a story of courage, strength, and determination. City Schools is committed to building a safe community for LGBTQ students and staff, where they can thrive and achieve their potential. In April 2019, the school board adopted policy JBB, which protects students from discrimination and harassment based on their sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity and expression, marital status, disability, and if they are pregnant. In August, the Equity Office, an office of legal counsel, presented a plan to the board for supporting LGBTQ students, and the implementation of that plan has already begun. I am pleased that we have taken these steps, and we are firmly resolved to protect the cause of human dignity. And now, we will move to a presentation this evening from our partners, from Clifton, Larson Allen. It is now my pleasure to introduce Bill Early and Ayers Coleman. And Ayers, I don't know if it's just you this evening, who will present City Schools' 2020 Financial Statement Update, and we will have a... And we will have a brief PowerPoint before we continue. So thank you to our colleagues from Clifton Larson Allen.
Thank you so much, Dr. Santalisa. Yes, I am joined by Bill Early. I don't know if Bill is on camera. All right, so I'm Ayers Coleman.
I'm here too, Ayers.
Okay. Good. We're getting the hang of this. So Bill and I are from CLA. My name is Ayers Coleman. I'm an Engagement Director with CLA. Bill Early is the Principal for the City Schools Financial and Single Audit. So what we're doing today is presenting the results of the 2020 Financial Statements for Baltimore City Schools. The schools are required to have an annual audit of the financial activity for the fiscal year in accordance with state guidance. So we'll go ahead with the presentation. So the agenda, we'll basically talk about our approach for the financial statements, the audit results, some required communications that we must make with governance, and then we'll talk about a little bit of the upcoming Gadsby pronouncements. So our audit approach, for many years, we have partnered with King &amp; King and Phillips Company, which are minority contractors, to assist us with the audit. It's an integrated team, meaning that they work alongside CLA members, and you really would not be able to tell who is a contractor versus who is CLA, which is a very proud thing that we have, is that we make sure that when we're working with contractors, it's integrated and everyone is getting the same experience from the engagement. We also have IT auditors that look at the financial system of the schools and make sure that the controls related to the financial statements are properly designed to detect any errors or misstatements. For the approach for the financial statements, we use a risk-based approach. And what that means is we look at and determine key areas within the financial statements, and that's where we put most of our focus. Because when you look at our opinion, our opinion basically is on material misstatements. We do not give assurance over every dollar that's in the financial statements, but the key items that are there, we are given assurance on that level. As far as communication, we had frequent communication with management. We work with Mary Ann's team quite closely, and we even have like formal and informal meetings throughout the process. Next slide. Thank you. So as part of the auditor results, so we issued an unmodified opinion over the financial statements. It sounds a little weird with that unmodified, but actually, that's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are allowed to give. We also issued a report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. There were no material weaknesses. This report is strictly for financial statements that are reported in accordance with government auditing standards. And what we're doing is giving a assessment or an opinion on the financial controls related to the financial statements. Next slide. Thank you. So this makes for quiet communications that we're allowed to do, that we must do as part of the audit process. So our responsibilities for these financial statements. I know the financial statements have been presented, and everyone has had a chance to kind of look at those and get some, you know, your thoughts and feedback on them. When you look at the financial statements, I think it's about maybe 150 so pages. I think we have two to three pages in there that actually belongs to CLA, and that's the auditor's opinion. That's the only thing, everything else in the financial statements belong to management, and management makes representation of that. We are required to perform our audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and that we make sure they are, they are in compliance with these standards. When we look at the qualitative aspects of the accounting practices, management is responsible for the presentation of the financial statements. We just ensure that those presentations is in accordance with auditing standards. And when you look at the financial statements, and you look at Note 1, that will give you the policies and procedures used by management to compile the financial statements. Next slide. Thank you. So when we're preparing the financials, or not preparing, sorry, when we are reviewing the financials, there are some items that are estimates or judgments made by management. And when we say these are estimates, it means that they are other underlying assumptions that are used to determine what the value are, the value are, the value is of these numbers as of the financial statement date. And so when we talk about those, we look at Gadsby 68, which relates to your net pension liability disclosures. We have Gadsby 675, which relates to the OPEB liability disclosures, depreciation lives for the capital assets. City Schools has a, they're self-insured, so they have an IBNR, which are self-insurance claims that have occurred before the year end, but may not have been reported to City Schools. Then you have your compensating absence liability, which is your vacation and sick leave that's paid out by the schools once taken by the employee. And then they have allowance for their accounts receivable. Next slide. So when we look at these estimates, we look at the underlying assumptions that are used by management. Some of the assumptions are coming from third parties, such as actuaries and other vendors. And we determine the reasonableness of these assumptions that are used to determine the financial statement numbers. We have no sense of disclosures in the financial statements. During the audit, there were no difficulties that were accounted with management or obtaining any information. Next slide. There were no disagreements with management regarding the financial statements or any procedures or estimates that were there in the financials. Management is required to give representation. As I mentioned before, we have like two to three pages in the financial statements that belong to the auditor. Everything else belongs to management, and we do ask management to give us representation to state that the information that they provided to us is true and accurate to their best knowledge. Management did not consult with any other accountants as part of the audit process. Next slide. There were no significant issues discussed with management prior to our retention as auditors. We have been the auditors with management with the schools for a few years, and each year, you know, there was no, we didn't have any conversations with management asking us if, how do we, what was our take on a certain matter in order for us to retain as their auditors. There were no additional findings or issues not previously discussed. And when you look at financial statements, there are some other information, supplemental information that accompanies the financial statements. We do not express an opinion on that information. We basically look at it to make sure that the financial statements and notes that we have audited are supported and actually represented in that supplemental information, and it does not deviate from what we are giving opinion on. Next slide. So these are two upcoming Gadsby pronouncements. Actually, both of them have been disclosed at the meeting in prior years because they were, one was due to be implemented this year, and another was due to be implemented in fiscal year 21. But due to COVID, both of these items have been pushed back, one a year and one 18 months. So the first one is Gadsby 84, which relates to the fiduciary activities. And this will be more in relation to the Student Activity Funds. And we have been in discussion with management, giving some recommendation and guidance from the Gadsby in order for City Schools to implement this requirement when required. And then the next statement is leases. And what this does, the Gadsby is changing the way that the leases are presented in the financial statements. Next slide. Well, thank you very much for allowing us to have a little bit of your time. Are there any questions?
Well, Ayers, I just wanted to make a comment. I know she's not here tonight, but I just wanted to thank Mary Ann Cox and her staff and all the departments we work with. This was a challenging audit for them, the first remote audit that was conducted. So there was a lot of challenges with that, with them all working remotely, as well as us being remote and having to upload a lot of information and getting on Teams meetings and things like that. So hats off to them for a superb job during this remote audit time. And then, Ayers, if we have any questions?
Well, thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you all. No, thank you for continuing to partner with us, and particularly in these trying times, as you, as you just referenced. And I will also shout out Deputy Mary Ann Cox for her just continued work on this regardless of the circumstances. So thank you all. Much appreciated. And I do want to also just point out that this marks the 11th straight year that City Schools has had a clean, unmodified audit opinion. That is not a minor thing, and we are proud of that. And folks, I would just encourage the public to keep that in mind as you watch your Sunday afternoon football. Thank you. Thanks again. At our last board meeting, I said that our essential responsibility is to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students, especially our most vulnerable, and this has become incredibly trying during the last seven months. I believe we're up at month seven now. And we know that while we have numbers of students that are thriving in the virtual environment, we also know that it's not working for too many of our students. I was out today to some of our SLCs and had a chance to talk with staff on the ground, visit with families, some of families, students that had, are taking us up on the Student Learning Center. Got to see some kindergartners who were hanging tough in the virtual environment, but it was clearly very challenging. And particularly also today, at least for some of our students with disabilities. So we are continuing to work to meet our essential obligations, to educate and meet the needs of all of our students. We are developing a list of additional schools that will serve prioritized students who choose to participate in small group in-person learning beginning November 16th. Student participation will be completely voluntary and limited to those enrolled in the schools that are chosen for this expansion. Families who want their students to continue virtual learning may do so. I had the opportunity today to see two special education teachers at, I'm trying to think which school. Our first one at Wildwood Elementary Middle, who were doing yeoman's work, giving me really great feedback about what it is like to have students both virtually and in person. And as we have done since first bringing small groups in person this summer, we will continue to work closely with the Baltimore City Health Department and our Health Advisory Committee to ensure that we adhere to approved health and safety guidelines at every site, every day. We are also working, and we'll be going into more detail this evening about those safety measures, as well as at Thursday's Board Public Forum, to be able to hear from the larger community. Health and safety measures include face masks for staff and students, daily health screening and temperature checks. I have been screened and temperature checks. I inadvertently this morning started walking into one of the buildings, and I quickly had a staff person run over and say, I know it's you, Dr. S, but you still need a temperature check. So they were on post. Daily cleaning and disinfecting, had a chance to speak with some of our custodial crew today, as well as staff who were there. They are noticing those increased deployments of custodians. And then, of course, small class sizes to facilitate social distancing. So in summary, we really are moving, mobilizing to make sure that we can offer those families that want in-person, those young people who need in-person the most, this in-person learning opportunity. But I also want to stress that the expansion of small group in-person learning really is our next very measured step in meeting that responsibility. And also want to say that I am in frequent communication with Dr. Deraza, our Health Commissioner. I actually had a chance to speak with her this morning. I know that there have been inquiries about shifts in data for Baltimore City, as well as the state. And so we are monitoring those incredibly closely. And so at any point, you know, we will make shifts according to where we are with our, with our advisors. So since the summer, the district has been safely bringing small groups of prioritized young people, students, back to the classroom for in-person learning. Tonight, we will have a chance to see a brief video from our communications team on some of those safety and health measures that are in place at our Beechfield Elementary Middle School Student Learning Center, a site that I was able to visit, Principal Coridio and her team, as well as the staff that are there supporting that learning center. Following that video, we will have a presentation on safe in-person learning by members of our Chief of Staff, Human Capital, and Operations Team. Because again, we are going to be expanding some of those discussions and communication with the public about exactly what those measures mean. And I do want to give a shout out to all of the school leaders, school leadership teams, some of the staff and teachers that are already in place, who just continue to give us really valuable feedback on which a lot of what you will hear this evening has been able to happen and be put in place. So without further ado, I believe we will view the video first, and then I will turn it over. It will be followed immediately by the panel.
Jamar, good morning, sir. Pull your mask up, okay, for me? Thank you, Jamar.
Each student stands at a cone, safely six feet apart, takes their temperature, and asks them the health screening questions. After that, they record the temperature, and then the student is addressed to the building, and then they get their doctor's and head to their classroom.
Our students and our students from our surrounding area get to come to school. They get to engage with their peers, have support from adults, and it's also really helping out our school community and our families. It's just been absolutely phenomenal. It's been a great experience, I think, so far. We are taking health and safety so extremely important here, and I probably have the best custodian. And yes, I said it. I said I have the best custodian.
Letting them know that it keeps them safe and building those relationships with the kids has been great in terms of getting them to follow the safety protocols.
Didn't close contact anybody with COVID the last couple of days to a week.
So our students come every day, and they're able to log into their classes, see their teachers, see their friends. You know, we have students that go to Thomas Jefferson, and we have their schedules. So we ensure that they are on their ELA class, their math class, social studies class. They're getting lunch, and then they also get some rec time with their friends. So they're playing outside, they're playing in the playground, and getting to see their friends in person.
If anything that's worth it is going to take some work. I think it's fantastic, and I really look forward to our students coming back.
All right, have a good day, okay?
And a big thanks to the Beechfield team. And now, I believe, Chief And now, I believe, Chief Grant Skinner. Are you taking it from here, or is Chief of Staff?
Good evening. This is Cleo Hirsch on behalf of the Chief of Staff team. Thanks, Dr. S.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for allowing us this chance to share some of the work that we've been doing. This evening, I'm presenting, along with my colleagues, Charles Hall, who's the Director of Employee Engagement, and Sharika Bolden, who's the Manager of Project Systems and Processes for the Operations Department, and Chief Grant Skinner and Chief Perkins Cohen as well. So when we laid out our plans for reopening in August, we set out some guiding principles around our plan for reopening schools. And paramount among those principles was health and safety. And our focus on health and safety remains today as we prepare for this next phase of reopening. Next slide. So as Dr. Santelisus mentioned, we have had staff working in person since actually the very first day after the governor closed schools in March. And a special shout out to the food service workers and the custodial workers who have been on the ground every day since schools have closed, running our emergency meal sites. At those sites, we often had up to 15 staff working socially distant, but within close proximity to each other, preparing hundreds of meals every day and keeping the space clean. And then we also had hundreds of community members coming to those sites every day to pick up meals for their families. And so from that experience, we've gotten very good at these health and safety procedures. Since then, over time, we've slowly called staff back to support the needs of our students and school community. So that includes some central office staff, and that also includes principals, school police officers, and big shout out to the Student Learning Center team that you saw captured in that video. They are, of course, onsite every day, working as well. So virtual learning has been going great for a lot of families, but we know that it is not as effective for some groups of students than others. So specifically, our early learners and our special education students are two categories of students where virtual learning is frankly hard. So as we prepare for the next phase of reopening, we will be asking staff who support the early learning and special education students at select schools participating in the reopening plan to return to in-person learning to support their students. Throughout this process, we have kept an eye on the community indicators. We work in close partnership with the Health Department and with our Public Health Advisory to look at this data, to discuss what it means for our plans. And every day, we do track the metrics in our community to ensure that we're on the right path as we make our reopening plans. So I just want to talk a little bit about where we are with our community conditions at this moment in time in Baltimore City. So this decision-making tree comes from the state. And as you can see, we start by looking at the test positivity rate. So we look at the last seven-day average test positivity. Right now, in Baltimore City, we are at 2.3%, which, if you look at the split decision-making tree, pushes us to the left. And from there, we look at the new case rate. Right now, in Baltimore City, our new case rate is 11.3%. That represents the last seven-day average daily new case rate per 100,000 people. And so if you take a look at this decision-making tree, that puts us very safely within the realm of being able to offer limited in-person programs. And actually, where the numbers are today, we, based on this decision tree, could offer hybrid or partially in-person programs. So our limited in-person program plan that we are discussing for November is well within the reins of this decision-making tree. If we see a spike in the data, or the cases change sharply over a day or a number of days, we do bring together the group of experts, and we reassess where we are with the data. And it is a continual process to ensure that we're informed by our Public Health Advisory and by the experts at the Health Department as we make our plans. So now I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Sharika, who's going to talk about some of the core components of our health and safety protocols.
Thank you, Cleo. Good evening, everyone. So we see here the key mitigation strategies, which were touched upon a little bit earlier this meeting. And as mentioned, these strategies have been developed under guidance from both the CDC and the Public Health Team. We want to be sure that the decision-making that we're following is based on science. And so we have nine mitigation strategies here. The first three are really ones that are taken on an individual level, everything from ensuring that there's social distancing to hand washing. And then the remaining six are steps that are being taken at an organizational level. So these strategies definitely took months of work to develop and required not only an examination of the national and local guidance, but also a reflection and examination of our internal processes and resources to be sure that we could reach those national and local expectations. And so on the next slide, we'll take a look at an overview of some of those additional resources that have been put into the organization to support the implementation of those protocols. And so there is a more detailed list available on the City Schools website. But this gives a sense of how the organization has been preparing from a material perspective to be able to implement those protocols, everything from purchasing masks for employees and students, to face shields, to air filters, to air purifiers. And finally, I wanted to highlight that this all requires learning new habits of safety, both as individuals and as an organization. And there is a new tool that is launching, I believe this week. It's a web-based tool for all staff to provide them with a better understanding of what COVID-19 is, how City Schools is addressing the COVID-19 health and safety measures, and provides a certification at the conclusion of the training to ensure that there's been good absorption of the information. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles Hall to talk a bit more about our COVID response protocols.
Thanks, Sharika, and good evening to everyone. So as Sharika stated, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our COVID response and protocols. So all of our processes are guided by the Maryland Department of Health, and they include the decision tree that you see posted here on the screen. And that decision tree is included in our reopening plan. Just so that you'll note a couple of things on the decision tree. The decision tree helps us identify the COVID-like illnesses, which fall into two categories. If you have the new onset of any one of the following, so you see the cough there, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, or if you have any two of the following, and then that list there. So the decision tree is going to help us outline which of the categories someone falls into and help us identify whether or not the symptoms they're exhibiting are COVID-like. We do know that, given the wide range of the symptoms that are identified as COVID-like, that there is a similarity between the COVID-like symptoms and some of the symptoms we expect to see during the cold and flu season. And so we're going to take a very conservative approach to how we respond to symptoms that could be cold and flu, or could be COVID-19. What we'll do is, we may ask someone to quarantine for the two weeks. During that time, if they see a medical professional or are tested for COVID and it's determined that it is not COVID, they will not have to quarantine for the full two weeks. And so they'd be able to return to work, but they have to have the medical documentation or a negative COVID test in order for that to occur. There are five steps that the COVID Response Team uses to make sure that we completely cover and respond to all COVID cases. The first step is the initial notification of the potential or a positive COVID case. The second step is notification to the COVID Reporting and Tracing Team in HC, where we'll collect all the information that's provided. Step three, we will then contact the initial person who's been impacted or identified as a potential or COVID case, which leads us to step four. And that is where we will notify the initial person who's been impacted, will tell them to quarantine for a two-week period, and inform them of the leave options that are available to them, which is 14 days of emergency paid sick leave that they'll be able to take during their quarantine period. Step five is where we will then notify others who are impacted by the COVID case, which includes any close contacts that have been identified by either the supervisor or the individual, other departments within the district. We also collaborate and work with the Health Department, as well as Parks and Recs, when applicable. Also, just so that you'll know the definition of close contacts, it is defined as anyone within six feet or less for 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period. And while you see the slide that's up speaks to employees, we do want you to know that the same general five steps are in place for students and all persons who will be onsite for any, in any city school building. We do know that there's a board forum, thank you, scheduled for this coming Thursday, where we'll be able to discuss health and safety protocols and procedures more in depth. And that concludes our presentation for this evening.
Well, I just want to thank all of you for this presentation. I will say to the Board of Commissioners and to the public, and the three people that you saw here presenting, you have seen some of the people who have done the heaviest lift in making sure that things are in place, both with regards to contract tracing and testing, safety, and the smoother running and training in terms of protocols for our SLCs. I will also just give a shout out to Sonya Goodwin, who has also assisted. But again, the three folks you saw here tonight have done the major lift. This is the beginning of our offering increased opportunities for families to learn more about what a safe return to school looks like. I also would like to thank members of the Baltimore City delegation, who also came out to visit our SLCs in person and had very positive feedback. And again, just a big thank you to everyone there as we move forward in these truly unprecedented, unprecedented times. So with that, Sherchenya, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisus. And I too want to thank the staff who have been working since March, actually, in terms of developing and implementing and refining the protocols, and looking forward to being able to offer those. So thank you to all of you. And I also just want to do that shout out one more time in terms of hoping that the public heard the announcement you made to repeat the fact that this is the 11th year that we've had a clean audit. Many, many times, people complain about our system without merit. And I think that this is a great achievement, and I want to be certain that we celebrate it appropriately. So thank you. And thank you to the staff that helps make that possible, too. At this point, at this time, we're going to hear a presentation from the Academics Office on the City Schools ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan for 2020. And this is one of our information items for this evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Chenia, and thank you all. My name is Casey Mengele. I'm the Special Assistant in the Academics Office. You all get to see me every year and have, for the past at least five or six years, presenting this information to you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen unless directed otherwise not to.
You're fine, Casey.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to present this evening on this year's 2020 ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan. I do want to be clear, and I usually try to be at the beginning of this presentation, as exactly what is being presented. This evening, I will be sharing generally the background and review of the SNMSDE requirements for this plan. I do have some key updates to share with regard to the 2020 submission. And we'll be sharing the timeline and opportunities that we have available for feedback on our current draft plan. What this is not, however, is an actual summary of the contents of the plan. And it is not a review of the grants that are submitted alongside of the plan. So just very briefly, back in 2002, the Maryland General Assembly enacted the Bridge to Excellence in Public Schools Act. Since, subsequent acts have maintained the need for local school systems to complete strategic plans, previously known as the Master Plan. In 2019, this was reauthorized and was transitioned to be called the Local ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan, and is part of the Every Student Succeed Act. Prior to this current school year, the strategic plan's purpose was to give the district an opportunity to articulate our vision, our mission, and to provide a supporting narrative under which we were going to be identifying areas of focus for the district. To be clear, last year, when we submitted this, the idea of these plans is not to be all-encompassing and to share every nuance of what City Schools is doing. Rather, it asked us to identify three areas of focus for the district and to provide data and reasons and rationale as to why we were going to be focusing our efforts in those. We then took the opportunity to align all of our grants to those efforts. And therefore, last year's strategic plan focused a lot of time on that. The strategic plan also allows us to highlight COMR required work in the areas of equity, gifted and advanced learning, and comprehensive teacher induction. In addition, the timeline is such that the strategic plan is also used as the opportunity to submit all of our federal and state grant applications. This year, however, there was a change. As a result of the COVID closure and the subsequent development of reopening plans, MSDE requested that we not, this year, include a narrative section for the 2020 plan. Because every school district was asked to develop reopening plans with goals and strategies in mind and aligned those to previous strategic plans, they did not request us to then write another plan for this school year ahead, and rather to really focus our efforts on the reopening plans themselves. The finance section, I do want to call this out here because it says the completion of the finance section was recently added back into the submission. MSDE adjusted this and is having the finance section submitted separately, directly to their finance staff, rather than as part of this plan. So I just want to be clear about that. In this year's submission, the only things that were required to be included really was the responses to the gifted and advanced learning questions, as well as the comprehensive teacher induction questions. There were no equity questions this year. However, we had in previous years, and included as a link, access to our equity policy, just so that they knew that we had one. Again, it was included in last year's. This year, we also provided, this is the opportunity, to submit the federal and state title grant applications. So that's inclusive of Title I, II, III, IV, Fine Arts, and our Neglected and Delinquent Grants. We have posted on City Schools' website, will be posted following this meeting, the COMR responses to the ESSA 2020 Consolidated Strategic Plan request for the state. In addition, at the front of those responses, I have included a narrative just to share in brief what we had submitted last year, so that everybody knows that our three areas of focus still remain such, and that our plan, the strategic plan, as well as the reopening plan, are really grounded in the same things: our blueprint, our drive for equity, and excellence, as well as the three focus areas that we have here as a district. So again, that will be available for review by the public on City Schools' website. And anybody who would like to provide feedback on the current narrative that is available should feel free to just email me directly and happy to address that feedback, as well as incorporate any necessary feedback into our final plan that comes back before this board mid-November, and then off to the state. So to reiterate our timeline, we did provide a written update to Teaching and Learning. Today is our board, initial board presentation. The strategic plan draft was already submitted into MSDE. We're currently receiving feedback on that. Our draft plan will be open for public comment and review from this evening through November 6. Comes back for board vote on the 10th, and then is due to MSDE on November 16. Questions? Comments? Questions? Comments?
If you have a question, a board member, just state your name.
Commissioner Roberts, good evening. Thank you so much for your lovely presentation. Um, I have one question, and it's, it's kind of blanket. If you had to simplify this, the ask of the public and what their involvement or what their feedback or what you're looking for, or not particularly looking for in terms of engagement with the various stakeholders, what exactly does that look like in simplest form?
Sure. Thank you so much for that question. It's a fantastic question. And last year, you know, we, when we developed what was a very, you, you may recall, it was a some 83-page document that, that consolidated feedback from across stakeholder groups as we developed our strategic plan. This year's was very different in that regard, simply because they had cut out much of the narrative and just asked us to maintain our areas of focus, which, for us as a district, focus on academic growth as well as performance, and then school attendance and climate indicators. So those are our areas of focus, of which you can see align quite keenly to our blueprint. So previously, there were those opportunities for feedback and input across what we were doing with our grants, with the blueprint, et cetera. This year was certainly different. As we ask for feedback, however, this year, right now, the two areas which we have narrative around, which are our gifted and advanced learning, as well as our induction supports, would be more than happy to receive any questions with regard to our responses to those. And then in future, I would assume that we'll be going back to evaluating not only the strategies that we had in last year's strategic plan, but would continue to do that outreach and engagement with stakeholders in order to, to move that plan forward and show how we're adjusting it based on actual performance metrics, as well as feedback from the community. I hope that helps. It, it's an awkward question to answer in this time because this year's plan looks, it, it just looks so very different because we're basically maintaining what we did last year, plus responding to the very few things that the state asked us to.
No, that was, that was a great response. I was asking because I know that sometimes in all of the bigger or the larger documents, sometimes the ask can get lost. And then I think about our recognized groups like PCAB and CCAC and PTA, and how they can be a part of this process in a strategic way of it, of it, of including the voices of community in that, and kind of flushing and, and kind of promoting the ask of bringing feedback in also. So thank you so much.
No, thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Okay, here ain't no one else. Thank you, Ms. Mengele, for the presentation, and again, please note the email and the fact that you can check what is on the website and respond to our responses to the questions that the state has asked.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, I'm going to be reviewing at this time the consent agenda. This is prior to our, to our public comment. Our board colleagues, let me know if you would like to have an item removed, and please, if you do, state what your question is, so staff can be prepared to respond to that when we come back to it. Item, I believe, item 8.01, item 8.02, and 8.03 are all going to be pulled for, for specific votes. So I can tell you that one, those three.
Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry. We don't necessarily, the original 801 and 803 was going to be for Commissioner Sykes. I don't believe he's, was able to make it tonight. So if there's no specific questions, we don't necessarily need to pull 801 and 803.
Okay, that, I'll go back to that one then. So April, then I'll, I'll just start reading. 8.02, we do need to pull because of the special language for that charter application. So 8.01, Policy EGAD Intellectual Property. Okay. 8.03, Policy KDD Media Relations, second reader. 8.04, Waiver Requests, FKA, the Fund for Educational Excellence.
Madam Chair, I like, I like to pull that one, 8.0.
Your question?
I would just around the, the request for the waiver. Did you hear me?
Is, is, I mean, is there a specific question or just generally?
I know that the document that we got was specificity around the difference of having not open bottle containers, but BYOB versus what this waiver request is indicating.
Okay, okay. 13.01, SAS Institute Incorporated. 15.01, James River Solutions and PAPCO Incorporated. 15.02, Team Service Corporation of New York. And 15.03, Team Service Corporation of New York. 15.04, Chilmar Corporation. And 18.01, James Wathem. Okay. So thank you. So now we'll move into public comment, and we have speakers. A reminder that speakers from recognized groups have the opportunity to speak for five minutes. First off, this evening, we have Ms. Tisha Lester, who's representing the Baltimore Teachers Union. I believe that you said it's a video, so we will start there.
There's no sound.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tisha Lester. I was previously a community school coordinator with the district. Now I am currently on PSRP external assignment with the Baltimore Teachers Union. Most importantly, my favorite title is mother. I have three kids that attend Baltimore City Public Schools. My number one job is to protect them at all times from harm and danger. I come to you today asking if you could delay the opening of schools in November. I know there are many kids that are missing school, but it isn't safe in Baltimore City if they're not prepared to open November the 16th. District plans are currently incomplete. There is no real blueprint or plan that will keep kids of Baltimore City and police safe. There are legitimate health concerns. Numbers are currently going up.
Part section just ended.
From four weeks ago, the probability rate is 50% higher from four weeks. I actually know so many people right now with COVID.
There's that, there's no sound.
Oh, someone, hello? Okay, yes, someone muted me, so I'll continue play.
Four weeks ago. I actually know so many people right now with COVID. Last year, flu cases began to arise the 47th week of the year, which happens to be November the 18th. Being home and indoors will help reduce flu infection. The continuing coronavirus pandemic and flu will just complicate everything. The latest city data indicates that Baltimore City was at 11 daily new cases per 100,000 people and still rapidly going up. The district needs to prioritize the safety of our students and staff. We cannot move forward with student and in-person instruction without taking necessary precautions. It's still not safe. Our youngest and most medically vulnerable students deserve safety, and the district cannot guarantee that a full-time school nurse will be present at every school. Some staff will have to choose between the health of their family or receiving a paycheck, which is an unnecessary and upsetting decision. This has turned into a big talking point over the week with the district saying again and again that most people there are volunteers. The district has not created an option to first seek volunteers among staff to return in person. The district already directed over 400 staff to return in person to our separate public day programs and 27 schools that are being open for students. Public ventilation assessments are needed in every classroom. Classroom previously had an elation issues that new filters alone do not solve. Even some of our 21st century school buildings are incapable of having windows open, making them not ready for in-person learning. And out of the 27 schools that will be reopening, the facility conditions assessment on those schools did not report a 100% safe environment. Seven schools did not have a report. One school came back poor, meaning the HVAC system has significant, significantly, significantly aged, flaws in functioning intermittently and not in compliance with standards. Seven schools had a good report, and 11 schools had a fair report with deferred maintenance and repair will eventually need to be required. If we lack the resources to take the necessary steps to ensure that schools are safe, then we cannot risk human life by sending our most vulnerable students and staff back in. Good afternoon. My name is Tisha Lester.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker, we have Ms. Winifred Winston from CCAC.
Hello, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I am Winifred Winston, Chair of CCAC, and I wanted to share feedback that we've received from parents who, children are receiving special education services. So we have had a mixed, a mixed concern, if you will. Some parents are absolutely nervous and scared about their children returning for in-person. But then what was shocking is that we also had a lot of parents who want to send their children back because they're not able to manage the learning at home with also working virtual and working full-time in some respects. So I'm very excited to hear that tomorrow, well, Thursday, actually, we'll have the board forum, and I know that some of the parents who had concerns were on tonight and was pleased to see the presentation that Human Capital presented, because those were some of the questions that we were getting and unable to answer. So I did wanted to, I want to share with you all that we have had parents who are frightened, but they know that their children need to be in school, and some who want it, but just want to be reassured that we're doing everything we can to ensure their safety and the safety of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Okay, and now I'm going to turn it over to our board exec for additional public comment. We don't have other recognized groups at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we can start with the people who signed up to speak live. I believe the first is Ms. Ernestine Chambers. Are you on? Ms. Chambers? If you are on or you're on a phone, you need to try star six to unmute if you're not on the app. Okay, we can come back to you, see if you're on. Next, Ms. Aleah Bid, representing SOMOS. Are you on? Okay, I'll also do another return to that one. Ms. Bianca Dumbaya at Mount Royal Elementary School? I heard something. Are you on? Okay, one, we'll try one more time, and then I'll, um, last, as far as speaking live, was as Michael Towns. You're willing, you want to speak live, talking about the Student Learning Centers. Michael Towns, are you on? All right, we, we are striking out on the line today. I'm going to move to an email we received to be read out loud. This is from Mr. Kevin Mickey. And again, he wanted his comment read. Said, "My son learns more by seeing than he can think. He is used to discipline, getting up, getting ready for school, and getting on the bus. He has a regimen that is used to when the bus doesn't come, he doesn't understand. He gets excited about going to school. He looks forward to seeing his peers, teachers, and sitting at his desk. He learns by using his sign, seeing and touch. He learns better hands-on than a computer. I'm so grateful for Claremont and the staff, that they have been tremendous help in my child's learning during the pandemic. Thank you."
I guess they're about to put your camera on.
Chris Chang, you are, Chris Chang, you're muted if you were saying something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe, oh, Ms. Covington, are you?
Yes.
Covington. Okay, we can just pause public comment real quick.
Oh. Hi, everyone.
Hello, Corporal Covington. We just wanted you to know that we had celebrated you, the work that you have done with JEMZ for years, even before you were a star in the New York Times with your gorgeous picture there. You were doing it when no one was watching. You were doing it just out of your love for our girls, for our young people. You model the investment that we all need to make in our students, and just wanted to shout you out. Knowing you, you were over, probably, talking to a young person when we were calling. But I want to thank the board chair for just pausing public comments.
Oh, nice.
This is your award. We will be. It says, and I'm, and you know how my glasses off now, "In appreciation of your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to your mentoring program, JEMZ, girls expecting more success, and Baltimore City Schools, we thank you. We thank you for walking the talk."
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Corporal Covington, thank you on behalf, on behalf of the board. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, but it's not about me. It's about the children and those relationships. And I'm so happy to do it. I'm just so passionate about children, because if we don't do it, who else is going to do it? So it's up to us to get the young people minds right and get them educated, and it's just the joy. I just love doing what I'm doing. I really do, and thank you, and I appreciate you all honoring me tonight.
Oh, great. You're a great role model for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Back to you and public comment. Okay, Mr. G.
Okay, we have Ms. Kashima Jackson with a video.
Hi, my name is Kashima Jackson. I am the parent of Cash Braxton, who's a third grader at Dorothy High Elementary, and Kelson Braxton, who's a second grader at Dorothy High Elementary. The reason that I chose to send my children back to school was. not only does my youngest son has autism, but I thought that it would be a great way for them to feel a sense of normalcy and also work on their social skills and build new friendships and relationships through this whole pandemic. I felt as though they would benefit from it because I'm not a school teacher. I don't have like the patience that school teachers had. So I figured that if he was in a smaller classroom, he would also benefit from, not only you being a smaller class, but more one-on-one attention from the proctor and this child. Cash and Kelsey are doing phenomenal this school year. We couldn't ask for a better program. And I'm so excited that my husband and I chose to send the boys back to school. They absolutely love it. I was a little weary because we couldn't walk them into school like we normally would do on our first day of school, but they assured us that our babies were safe. And they sent videos and pictures all day of the students and what they doing. They didn't have any requirements for us to bring anything or to send anything back to the school because of safety issues. And I just really, really, really am glad that we chose to send the boys back to the SLC. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Shawna Peace. She also has a video.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Peace, and my student attends the Student Learning Center at William Packer Elementary School. The SLC has been very beneficial to his growth over the last month. The SLC is beneficial for students for a number of reasons. One, it provides structure and routine. Two, students are guaranteed a learn-ready environment. Three, two solid meals and a snack are also provided. The virtual education of many students throughout Baltimore City has fallen on parents, grandparents, family, or friends that are not familiar with navigating the internet academically. The challenges of Wi-Fi, computer access, and let's not forget, parents that must attend work, leaving children at home to figure it out, impacts the education of our future leaders. Student learning centers are clean, safe, and positive solutions for families that are challenged by the virtual learning environment.
Okay, next we have Mr. Ben Dolby with another video.
I am a parent of two children in Baltimore City Public Schools, and I'm here with a very simple message, which is that we need to stop pretending. It's no longer good enough. And I know that's going to be hard. It is hard. It's hard for me. Luckily, we can kind of do it in baby steps. And the first one is to stop pretending that we can have school in Baltimore City in a pandemic with a president who wants us all to get sick and a governor who vetoes funding bills for a school district, which is owed billions of dollars by the state of Maryland, which is the richest state in the richest country in the history of the world. It's time to stop pretending. It's time to stop following instructions from people who hate us. No child is going to get COVID because we reopened schools this fall because we're not going to do it. No teacher is going to sit in their car in the morning psyching themselves up to go into a building that they know is dangerous because we reopened schools this fall because we're not going to do it. No granddaughter is even going to worry if she's picking up COVID at school and bringing it home to her grandmother because we reopened schools this fall because we're not going to do it. Because we're going to make our own decisions for ourselves for what makes sense for our communities and our lives because Black Lives Matter, Baltimore matters, and we're not pretending anymore.
Okay. Okay, this is a video from Ms. Madeline Munson Rosen.
Hi, school board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Madeline Munson Rosen. I live in Baltimore City. I'm a BTU member, and I teach 12th grade English at Coppin Academy. I'm calling, I'm speaking to you today to ask you not to send us back to work in school buildings before it's safe. The district hasn't committed to publicly reporting investigations of positive COVID cases. They haven't instituted any kind of comprehensive testing program. They haven't committed to having a nurse at every school to administer health screenings. We don't have any information about the ventilation of school buildings or capacity limits in classrooms. I'm not crazy about virtual instruction. I've been a teacher for a long time, and I want to go back to my students, teaching my students face-to-face more than anything. But we know that virtual instruction is the safest choice. We know that the district is not communicating with us. They're not helping us. They're not working with us. They're not supporting us. And those are all actions that may, that risk the health and safety of our students and our families. And that's the most important thing to me. So I just am asking you today to keep instruction virtual until it's truly safe to go back to work. Thank you so much. Again, I'm a proud BTU member and a Baltimore City resident. I'm also a parent and will very soon be a Baltimore City Public Schools parent. Thanks again.
Okay, give me one moment. While I'm getting the last one together, is there anybody that was supposed to comment live that's logged on? If you can identify yourself. Okay.
Christian, did you see the place in the chat about parents with a number, I think? I don't know if you've seen that.
Can you, oh, okay. Give me one moment.
Christian, someone said they're waiting to be let in. Do you have anyone in the lobby?
No, we don't have lobbies for these meetings, so.
Oh, okay.
So Cleo, what I'll do is just read this next one and then come back to you and hopefully they can get in by then.
Does it make sense that they're on hold and calling in on a phone?
No, they shouldn't be on hold. We don't, there's no lobby. That's, there's no lobby. We had the settings. There isn't a lobby with teams, or at least with this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. The next one is from Ms. Elizabeth Dango. She provided her message in Swahili, and she requested that be read, and then I will read the English translation. So.
We became a much Jaclyn. And called you like a sinclery. We either to take a Jacky are to nail our icon. Pasque na yanga tanin de mi go na kwa. I'm being solo di manke. And when I got internet, internet la mache you up. Just it in a courage and economy na lo yo yo a cap. Don't know what I should be. We either to take a Jacky are to nail my icon. My premier is a be either a lot of toca business. Don't social a toca business. I got more than I am gonna eat a king or a youngada. Yes, I'm be either. We can amelie go ta. Well. We either to take a men get you to go ta koe a kiri na icon. As all look in a bingo. But Christian, don't be either to take a men get you to go a kiri na icon. Pasque na icon, ala ke man da be ti juni. Me, I'm begging betisou. Metra que toka internet a cap men gana a recevoir. Betisou le ta toka metra toka sou, you show nap. Allee da to take a, ala iri di, bon ta so la iri di sou di ken a kwa. Diwa ra ta di ta di repon de metra na legina. Don't you need a? Bon, please, I look in a levy. Don't.
Waverly.
Waverly. Don't be either to take a, please, I, be either to take a, please, I, ki na icon. Be either to take a men get you to go ta koe a ki na icon, to take a, ala man da be ti. Na yaki ekon juni, yes, I'm a man a pay. Metra pekina fanaala, eh, ala ke ki na ordna tena yangada. So ala mani a ke ideala. Yes, I see a ke ideala. But ala bani, we can a kwa, ala ke iri di, tanso di ken a kera, tu me li ya pe. Boom, be inga, yes, I'm a toka na do ti internet a pe. Boom, be inga, yes, I see, I'm elige, a kiri na internet na professor a pe. Don't know what I should be. We either to take a men get you to go a ki na icon. Me, pardon, pardon, ala bando juni, na do ti amelie gini. Ala, ala bando juni, be mo, pardon, na government, ti ba ti mo. Si di ge, ala bando juni na men get you, so la yaki kiri na icon. Pasque me capable, be ke bata ala na yangada. Me, ala ke man beni, betisou si, metra ke fa so ala mani, biri di rap. Don't be either to take a men ken a go na icon. Eh, be mo, to take a, be mo, a poco to take a, government, mona be ma poco to na la. Eh, de men gini na be ti. Ala suve, men gini na di. Binga, bege souve na alanga aussi. Metra la iri di, si be mo telephone a pe. Ala yinga ke, be ken a kwa. Eh, I'm been a kwa sa, permette ke mo repon de telephone a pe. Me na yanga da la ke iri be ke ba. Jacky look in a, eko la pe. Please, I look in a, eko la pe. A jo look in a, eko la pe. Eh, be inga ya kona do ti, eh, to na go be diso sala, ki toka sou, be inga ya kona do na pe. Pasque be ma ti be na kwa. Don't know what I need la. Merci, 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 government, ti ba ti mo, me, na la kuta singela. Que zapa, a jam a poco, na do ti ba ti mo. Na do ti a metre, to take a, eko ti a mine na legini. Merci.
Okay, and this is the translation. My name is Elizabeth Dango. I have my youngest child, Jacqueline, who attends Sinclair School. I want the school to reopen because it has been challenging for me. I kept receiving phone calls during the day because my daughter cannot or have not logged into her virtual class as well as my other two sons. One is at Waverly Middle School, and the other is at Dunbar High School. Being at work, I can assist remotely. My workplace does not allow me to speak on the phone. As a single mom, I can split myself in different locations. I can't split myself in the different locations. Please assist and help my daughter in reopening with transportation. I thank Baltimore City Public Schools and all the staff for all efforts provided during the pandemic, and please take good care of our children as they are going back as you usually do.
Okay.
Cleo, is there, are any other members of the public online that signed up to speak?
Hi there. I'm sharing the phone numbers as requested in case those folks are on the line, Christian. It might just be worth resharing their names. They are trying to call in. They've just had some technological difficulties. So they tried to do it via phone.
Okay. Seven, two, two. I don't see any of those numbers. Connection issues. Oh, someone just, wait a minute, someone just joined. Oh, Michael Towns?
Hi, how are you?
Okay, there we are. Good. Okay. And you are on. You have three minutes.
Okay. Any particular question or just stating why this is important for my son?
Why it's important for your son is perfect.
Okay, so right now, I'm a full-time mom. I'm a full-time graduate student. I am a full-time employee. My son, who is dyslexic, has ADHD, some learning complications, and already struggling in school. Virtual learning has not been effective for him. Getting him to engage in his classes, getting him to actually retain the information and comprehension has been a really big struggle. And me working full-time, I can't necessarily address all of those the way that he could if he was in a setting that promotes him being able to engage in his computer and having someone there when they, you know, when he has a question or needs something versus me trying to host meetings and things like that. With COVID and having to return back to work, finding affordable childcare, finding childcare that's willing to assist him with getting on to the computer all day, it was a struggle for me to the point where even contemplating not being able to continue with my employment. And obviously, that wouldn't be a good idea for anyone. When I heard Mayor Jack Chung make the announcement about the Student Learning Center, I literally was looking it up as he was making the statement about it. I feel like my son has been able to engage more. He's not as in a depressive mood because he's able to be around his peers. He enjoys going into the program. And I definitely think it's something that's been beneficial not only to him, but also my family. So by having that around, it's been essential. I think that was my two minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if anyone else. Thank you, Ms. Towns. Ms. Chambers? Or Ms. Bid? Are you on? Or Ms. Bianca?
Christian, I think Andre said he's going to call folks.
Okay, someone, okay, great. Someone just called in.
Hello, Ms. Chambers.
Hello, how are you?
I am fine, Christian. That's Ms. Chambers.
Okay, thank you, Andre. Ms. Chambers, you have three minutes. Thank you for joining.
No problem. So I pretty much just wanted to just provide my insight on the program that my daughter is attending. Number one, it just came in a time, so like SLL, it came in a time where we're in a pandemic and schools are closed, which is out of the school district's power, obviously. But the fact that this program was initiated allowed parents like myself who are essential workers to continue to go to work. The component that I think affected me when I considered even putting her in the lottery to go to this program was also her safety. And, you know, when I pull up, everyone has masks on, they're taking temperatures, they know the kids. Like, you know, my daughter, actually, she goes to Glenmount, and she transferred from BIA. And so just in the quickest 30 seconds as I can.
remainder of the consent agenda and then I'll go back to the scripted one. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
So move, Bondeema.
Is there a second?
Second, McFadden.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondeema?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks back yet? Okay, Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. No one is opposed of staying, so I think this, this, this motion also passes. We have, did I get it correct this time? Six in favor and three absent. And now I'm going to go back to item 8.02. And I'm going to ask Angela, Ms. Angela Alvarez if she will join us. This is concerning Pimlico Elementary Middle School and a request.
Good evening, Board of School Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. I'm going to have Trevor on my staff introduce themselves. Trevor, if you're speaking, you're muted. Okay, and I'm not sure if he's having tech difficulties. So tonight we're...
I'm Trevor Roberts, Specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
But tonight, we're going to be presenting for a final vote, the charter application process and the applicants that were received.
And just to bring everyone up to speed on the process and the timeline, we originally were going to take charter applications in March of this year. Because of COVID and the closures related to that, we postponed the application deadline to August. So we took applications in August and through August and September, those applications were reviewed by the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board. That board made recommendations to the CEO in September. And those recommendations were presented to the public at the October 6th Board Work Session for Charter Applications. We also heard testimony from the applicant. And tonight, we will be, the board will be voting on the CEO's recommendation.
So the recommendation, the application came from the Baltimore Curriculum Project to convert Pimlico Elementary Middle School into a neighborhood charter school. The school serves students in grades P through the garden through eighth grade. It serves just under 700 students. And the recommendation is to approve. The proposal to convert Pimlico Elementary Middle School to a charter replicating the school programming implemented at other BCP schools presents compelling evidence that conversion would benefit students and the school. The application presents a variety of instructional approaches, including direct instruction in core subjects, core knowledge, and Eureka Math. The application emphasizes reading and literacy as a mean driver of student achievement. Both the research presented by the applicant and the operator's experience at other schools show this approach has led to higher achievement for students. The application and supplemental materials demonstrate a thoughtful and thorough approach to instruction, professional development, and supporting students and families. The application describes a thorough assessment, both formal and informal, and data analysis system that helps identify student needs and guide instruction. BCP is a recognized leader in restorative practices and has partnered with Pimlico Elementary Middle and its community since the 2019-2020 school year to develop these practices, along with team building and behavior management of the school staff and student body. Stakeholders report that this partnership has led to a positive change in school climate. Strong support for conversion among school community, including family, staff, and administration was presented by the applicant. Through his existing partnership with the school, BCP has gained strong support. There is a detailed plan included in the application for continued outreach to families. BCP has a strong organizational structure with a proven track record of operating conversion charter schools. BCP currently operates five conversion charters in Baltimore City. There's a broad range of experience on the board and the Founder Group in education and operations. There was a weakness in the college and career readiness plan for students not participating in the health pathway. The supplemental responses provided by the applicant in writing and at the work session has mostly resolved this concern. Some of the refinement includes their description of their Leaders Go Places program that includes partnerships with colleges and career days, the plans to expand the health pathway to include more future, more students in the future, a focus on student performance and composite scores, so students start to develop a mindset around excelling and getting prepared for high school, and their program called Career Conversations with BCP. This is an area they should continue to refine to ensure there's a clear plan for each middle-grade student. The strengths in this application and the supplemental responses, which fully address some other areas of potential weakness thus not discussed at length here tonight, demonstrate a clear, coherent, specific plan and readiness for successful operation. It is for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Brooke and Santalisis that the recommendation is to approve a charter for Baltimore Curriculum Project to convert Pimlico Elementary Middle School for a term that begins on July 1, 2021, and ends on June 30, 2026.
I concur with this recommendation. Board members, are there any questions that you may want to ask prior to moving to a vote? If not, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the considerations of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session, and the application and supplemental materials provided by applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
And we will... Is there a second to this motion, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McFadden.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
I did, sorry. I clicked my raised hand, but I don't think it went...
Okay, I just...
Sorry, I didn't see it.
Go ahead.
Do we have an idea, given the public, the size of Pimlico? Once, if we vote to convert, what the percentage of students citywide then would be members that are enrolled in charter schools versus traditional schools? And I don't necessarily need that number immediately because I don't think we're on the threshold yet, but I'm flagging that for board members because when we get to a specific threshold of charter schools versus traditional schools in a district, it becomes fiscally challenging to meet the needs of everyone. So if at some point in the future, we can get the percentage of students that would then be enrolled in charters versus traditionals and have that be an ongoing part of these presentations, I think would be important.
Yeah, we can give you that information and should talk further about it.
I have it off the top of your head right now.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
And I don't, and I'm not trying to stump, stump the speaker. I just think it's an important thing for board members to start putting in the back of their head for us to look at moving forward.
Yeah, we'll do.
So at a later date, that would be great to have that, even just personally. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts. I know that we spoke about this in our previous conversations about the potential for this to take place, but I think it's also really important for the community to know what it means for this school to become a conversion school, what that means for the community. And Angela explained that very beautifully to me, and I would ask that she explain it also to the community tonight.
Sure. So for conversion schools, the big reason around doing conversions is to actually improve the academic outcomes to the student populations that we currently serve. So for families and students who live in that neighborhood zone, there's no change into how they enroll. They would enroll just like they would in a traditional school, even though the school is now a charter school. The difference is for out-of-zone. So for families who are interested in this program that are out of zone, they would have to apply through a lottery basis for seats. The priority of seats goes to students who live in the community, who are part of that neighborhood zone. So it doesn't have a huge impact in terms of how you access the school for families within that community. The benefit is we have a strong partner who's demonstrated over and over again in their application of their ability to move to trajectory of performance and outcomes for students, and they really wrap around them in a holistic way. So it's a win-win situation for us as a district because of the work that they do and what it means for our students and their families of having almost a whole additional support team to really move the work and to support them through growth and really delivering on what we want for every child in our district.
Thank you so much, Angela. Madam Chair, I...
Okay. So are we ready to vote? It's been moved in second, so I'm going to move unless there's further questions. I'll move to the vote. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondeema?
Yes.
Commissioner, is Commissioner Brooks back?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner James?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. No opposedes staying, so we have seven in favor and two absent. And this motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this, at this time, I'm going to invite two of our chairs, committee chairs, to give us an overview of recent board committee meetings. And first will be the Operations Committee with Commissioner Roberts and followed by the Policy Committee with Commissioner Brooks. If others want to, let me know when they finish. But I know these two, these two committees have just met recently. Commissioner Roberts? Can we unmute her again? Somehow, we're all, okay.
I'm always muted.
You're unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Operation, on October 20, the Operations Committee met, and we had a fruitful conversation around transportation for returning students in terms of the different pipelines that our students are going back to school, but especially around COVID efforts that the district is taking around getting them to school safely. And so I would actually, because it was so fruitful, I would refer you all back to the Operation meeting for October 20 to really engage with the conversation in that way and follow up with us by email if you have any questions or need further contact around that. I do want to point out that tonight, for one of our procurement... Goodness, I'm trying to catch it. For one, for 1501, Jane River Solutions and Papco, Inc., I think it, it should be noted that 83 of our schools receive oil services to heat them. And as we're transitioning into winter, that is notable. For 15.02, that is, it should be noted that we are updating not only our supplies for cleaning and we're, we're including or we are making a more robust or engaging in more robust cleaning efforts, but we are also updating the technology around ensuring that our students are safe in the building. In one way that you can see that is through the updating of MIRV-17 filters. Those were just a couple things that I wanted to point out around the procurement that were approved tonight. You obviously can find those procurement in Board Docs and looking, look at them a little bit more in depth. But I wanted to say that while we had seen as a board and as a district feedback from families and community members and overall from stakeholders around communication, we hear you and we see you. We also see the procurement coming from the district side. So there are efforts, and we have been reassured by our CEO tonight, as well as other nights, that the communication efforts are in trend, they are in process to get to you. And you will see better and more simple and articulate effort to communicate those changes that we're doing in buildings because the work is happening behind the scenes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes. So similarly, we met with, also on October 20th, we covered a couple of, I think, really important policies. We covered policy JBAEH, which was Legal Representation, policy DMA, which is a school activity fund where we spent actually the most of our time. And then particularly policies BLA, BLB, and BLC, which was updating particular components in our, how we sort of engage with, what am I talking about? Christian, our sort of back end...
Appeals and hearings.
Appeals and hearings. Thank you, thank you. And so I think two notable things that we wanted to, to put out there, particularly for JBAE, Legal Representation. We also wanted to make it, make it clear that with some, in our policies that if there's ever a, if there's ever an opportunity or issue that staff is actually being supported. So if there's some things, please reach out to our office. If you, if there was something like a subpoena or something like that, we have some questions, our legal office is actually there to support our staff, our teachers included. And so, so that's something that we want to know that's available. There'll be more information rolling out, particularly around how to access that and how to access it easily. So if any of those instances occur, just know that you are supported. Also, I think a part of that conversation was with this, really the articulation of the support from the BTU, there was a point around helping to clarify that when teachers intervene or a staff person intervenes in a, in an issue that it potentially might be threat, that those type of ops, those types of circumstances are also covered for us, and we can really intervene. So if a teacher has to intervene in a very life-threatening or serious situation that, within consultation with our office, our legal office, that that's, that's on our minds, and please access and use us for that. Two, the biggest part of our conversation was really around the Student Activity Funds. You know, the policy, please go back and check out the video from that meeting. But there's been a lot of work going into sort of really refining that process. And I know that we'd had some issues in the past with the, sort of some of the reporting. And it looks like the, the office, they gave an excellent presentation around all of the learning and development that they are sort of implementing to address some of those critical gaps as well. Two notable things, which this policy will be coming up for first reader. I don't know exactly when, but it's coming soon. Christian might be able to help me a little bit later. And we'll also be getting additional feedback. But we did want to flag two areas that we had a lot of discussion in. First area was specific to crowdsourcing funds. Like, what's the process for that? And how do we begin to make sure that we have clear guidance around that? So that's like using a GoFundMe to do some fundraising. Like, how do we make sure that the principals and the administrators at schools know how to sort of keep those records and keep them on the books appropriately? And then the second piece is around using other technologies like Venmo to sort of transfer funds. And so really trying to give some more clear guidance there. But overall, the board was collectively really pleased and impressed with the thought and intentionality behind that process. And then for policies BLA, BLB, and BLC, our chief, our, not our chief, our Christian Grant, our Board of, Chief of Staff. Christian, I'm sorry. What is your title?
Board Exec.
Board Executive, thank you very much. Just updated some measures specifically so that we could account for some, some of the challenges to when people can report or remove themselves from some of the judicial hearing processes and, and sort of also running compliance for virtual and oral presentation. So it offered a little bit more clarity in the policy. So that was the gist of that. Be on the lookout for additional opportunities to get feedback, particularly on the school activity funds. And really looking forward to getting really robust and thorough presentations from the staff, because we really appreciated it. And it was really helpful for us to have a meaningful conversation, a dialogue.
And Commissioner Brooks, to add on, all three of those policies will come to first reader on December 8.
Awesome, thank you so much, Christian.
Okay. And I don't know if any other committee folks wanted to speak, but I'll just give you the, the set of meetings that are coming up. There's a Teaching and Learning Committee meeting will be on November 4. That should be a date you can remember, so they after you vote at 3:30. There will then be an Operations Committee meeting will meet again on November 17. Policy will meet again on November 17. And there is a district reopening forum this Thursday, October 29 at 6:00 p.m. There will be a Legislative Board Forum on November 12 at 6:00 p.m. And these are all virtual meetings. You can find the calendar for meetings is also on the system website so that you can look there. So we are at a time now, fellow board members, where we have the opportunity, if you would like to, as well as our CEO, to have any conversation or discussion or highlight any issues or events that you, that you want to bring forward during our time. Just a reminder to the public that during this discussion time, we do not take public comment. If something comes that you would like to ask about in, within this conversation, because it is just that a conversation, you can send it to the board office, and we'll follow up. So the floor is open.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I have one thing to say. While I know that over the last six to seven months, we have had so many opinions from families and stakeholders across the district. We've received so many emails, emails. We've received things on social media. We've received things, as Dr. Santalisis has referenced, in the supermarket. We, we receive them from everywhere, around families and community members and, you know, what they think safe and what their perspective is on what reopening looks like safely. I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge all of the correspondences that we receive. Even if you unfortunately don't receive a response, we do see them. We do receive them. We do take time to process them and have meaningful conversation about them. Because they have come in such large abundance, we don't really have the time to go through each and every one to offer an individualized response. But that in no way is saying that your feedback, your thoughts, your perspective, your anxiety, your hesitancy around what next steps look like for you and your family are not important because it is. We are all nine and a half, and I say a half because we have a student, and he's very much in school full-time. We're all very much, you know, into the day-to-day hustle and bustle as well. But I wanted to take the time to say that your emails and correspondences and perspective do not fall on deaf ears and that we do see them. We do ask questions around them. You do find blind spots that sometimes commissioners like myself, very much, I have blind spots. And so I thank you for identifying them and posing those questions. But I think it, we needed to create the space to acknowledge all of the correspondences that we've been receiving from families and stakeholders from across the district.
Thank you. Yes. And hope, and hopefully, in some of the plans and proposals, as well as some of the decisions, you will see by way of how they're shaped and, and what decisions are made, that we have taken those, those comments very seriously.
Board Chair Chinna, one of the things that I didn't get to say earlier that I would like to say is I know that we've had a lot of focus on reopening, at what level to reopen, you know, a lot of those questions. One of the things that I think has been missed that also dovetails to what Commissioner Roberts was saying about hearing feedback from across the district that I want to point out that we will be reporting out on with regards to plan. And that is the feedback we've received about virtual learning and adjustments to virtual learning that need to be made based on feedback. We have been, you know, really fortunate. We, the Teacher Advisory Council has really just, you know, they dove right in to coming up with, you know, again, recommendations that I think are strong for faculty, strong for families. And just want to point out that we will be rolling those out for second semester, second quarter, too, because I know a lot of the communication has been around in person. But I, I just want to sound loud and clear that we're also looking at improvements in the virtual space. So I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you.
Sure, Brooks.
Go ahead. Commissioner Brooks, I see.
Yes, yes, yes. So I just wanted to say thank you all so much. It was really great to hear from families who, I'm trying to figure where the camera is. So I'll need a better setup.
You look good, right in the middle of my screen.
You know, it's good to hear from families who actually made a choice to send their students to our student learning centers. And I, it was really heartening to hear from sort of the different types of families that we have in the district and how, I think, complicated and nuanced I think we need to be when we're trying to have conversations about how we bring folks back and that sort of piece. And so, so I just want to say thank you to all the families who have entrusted their young people to be in our spaces. And, and I think also at that same time, I want to acknowledge the fact that also a large majority of folks do not want to be in those spaces. And so I'm glad that right now we can at least have some conversation about choice and, and sort of our essential responsibility. And so I think one of the pieces that I sort of flagged in our prior executive session was really around sort of this desire to ensure that our students, that our staff has the capacity to actually have and hold the new students and families that we're trying to usher in. And so, you know, for me, Dr. Santalisis and Allison, who've been working really closely to this, one of the places where I feel that we need, that would help our cause, and particularly, and when I say the cause, it's really about ensuring that if we are bringing young people back whose families choose to have them to be here and in our care, do we have the internal capacity to ensure their safety? And so a part of that is if we're going to be bringing back a certain number of people, I want to make sure that we have the appropriate number of contact tracers, that we have the appropriate modes of testing. We need super rapid tests so that we can get back to sort of more in-person learning for those families who choose that and to do that quickly. And so I think however we can begin to better communicate and articulate that, that plan to families so that they can begin to make those decisions for themselves. I'm super happy and for, for all of that. Also, knowing that we are going into flu season, we are also across the country, we're seeing for some people with the third wave of COVID-19 infections, particularly around like, been sort of, in real time, because these data we're tracking from week to week, when are we actually going to be able to make adjustments in terms of our analysis around reopening? And, and it's sort of like, how realistic is that, honestly? If, if we're, if we're doing a week-by-week analysis... If, if we're, if we're doing a week-by-week analysis, how is that really going to impact the, the people and the young people and those, those learning spaces? And particularly the new folks that we're bringing on? And also I would love some clarity if we made any more decisions about mandatory staff, because I think that's where my biggest issue is. You know, I'm, I'm here for families to make choices. I also just want to make, I just want to be more clear about sort of that those, those staff folks who don't get that choice to make it on their own.
Okay. Think you've laid out a menu of, of what our priorities are going to be for several months to come. But yes, I, I mean, yes to all of what you've said. And hopefully, as folks listen to us in our conversations and see what, you know, the presentations and things, you see that these are the issues that are foremost. We're talking about them every day, every week, and we will continue to do so. Yes. I see Commissioner James. I see a hand up there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. So I have two pieces, just to reinforce what Commissioner Brooks just said on, on asking what we're doing about a voluntary transfer for teachers who may not be in physical locations or there may be teachers in that physical location that are not as health-able to be back. And how are we being nimble with staffing and placing? The other piece on COVID is to just remind board members that yes, we are hearing from immense volumes of people, but who are the volumes we're not hearing from? And the volumes we're not hearing from are typically going to be the families that are less enfranchised to begin with. And we also, as board members, need to step away from the who we're hearing from to listen to who we're not hearing from and, and be their voice on this board. So just, just reminding folks and stepping up there. And then my last question slash piece is, is a derivation from COVID. So if there's others that want to lean in on COVID things, I can push pause and come back. Or Madam Chair, if you'd like, I can just say it right now.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm wondering what we're, how this school district is approaching. We have, fortunately for us, some amazing school district members who are running for office. And as they run for office, if they are, you know, able to be elected and represent our young people on the city and state level, do we have a plan with the union for sabbaticals? Are they staying on our payroll? How are we handling the folks who are rightly so and gratefully so? And I want to uplift them, not, this is not a cut down on them at all. But how institutionally are we making sure they have a job to come back to? If they should choose to, as well as making sure we're doing our fiduciary oversight for people who may not be in spaces doing the work at the time?
I would just add that those are great questions. We need to kind of circle back because I think there's many layers to questions of what happens when staff become engaged in the governing process overall. I mean, we, we have, you know, additional flags. I think the, the good news is that folks are getting involved. And I think like a lot of things, we're gonna, we're gonna need to, you know, sift through and be clear in the communication about kind of where those crossroads come. And, and again, a variety of questions, I think the ones you asked, but also I think that there are a lot more. So definitely appreciate you putting those out there because it, I have some as well. And I think we're, we're in the process of kind of...
And it may be a place where we need to lean in with policy because we don't want to, you know, overfavor somebody, say, from a central office versus a school level. Or, you know, how, how are we looking at this as we are a system as a whole? And I want to encourage teachers and people in schools to be advocates and, and consider throwing their hat in for election. And it's a huge onerous task. So I want to make sure they're supported, but also make sure that we have, that we're not, you know, doing anything that might be malfeasance when it comes to...
Exactly.
Supporting folks.
No. Well, and I think it's supporting them and it's making sure that we still are maintaining integrity in our processes as well, right?
And some separation of urgency in that.
Well, sure. If you want to call in church state, I'll call it.
That's a metaphor, obviously.
There you go. There you go. But yeah, no, no, no. I definitely think that there's a number of points and I think you're, you're right to raise it. And, and there are a variety of perspectives around kind of how do we make sure regardless, right? So similarly, you know, if you are a food nutrition worker and you run for office, do you get the same privilege that in terms of any kind of return that a teacher might get? Like we have a wide variety of staff. And so I think grappling with those issues forthrightly, you're absolutely right. We need to put them, but I, I too have been mulling over some of that. So I'm glad you brought it up.
So again, once again, not expecting any answers today, but just making sure that we flag it and know that we'd like, you know, some, some transparency on that as we move forward.
Oh, great. No, thanks for surfacing it.
I don't see, I'm looking, I don't see other hands. Where are my missing hands? All righty then, I'm going to take your silence as a cue and say thank you. I think a lot got out there on the, on the, on the parking lot wall or whatever we want to call it to think about and to...
Madam Chair, but I propose we call it a bike rack and not a parking lot so that people get used to walking and riding bikes instead of driving.
Okay, I might just make it the, the back deck. How's that?
Yes.
Do the bike deck yet, yeah. Well, thank you. A lot of things to think about and to consider as we, as we move forward. So at this point, folks, I will entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So move on Dima.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, my goodness.
You can tell we're ready to go.
Yes, if there is no objection, I will say that we are adjourned. Is there any objection? Thank you then. Folks, thank everyone, board members, staff, folks who have joined us in the community. Thank you for a very fruitful evening, a lot of information. Take care, please stay safe, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, good evening, and see you soon.
Good night, everybody.